All right, I'm going to call the meeting out of order here. This is the July 26 regular meeting of the Truensburg Planning Board. It's a little bit after seven o'clock and I'm officially calling the meeting out of order. We'll start with a roll call of board members. Hannah Herbert.
Vicky Romanoff.
Brooke Geiger.
Jessica Giles.
And we're joined by Guy Cole, a co-pro, Chuckie Guy Pro, and Tom Myers. We don't have Kami with us tonight, the village clerk. She is dealing with a health issue. She's been working some very late nights, special for trustee board meetings and other things, and just needed to recuperate a bit. So it will be difficult, but we will survive without her continuing on. I want to ask now whether we have any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
No.
No? Okay, I don't hear any, so there won't be any. Have you all had a chance, at least, of the minutes of the last meeting? We did take a number of actions, so, and I'm pretty sure they're all there, but if anybody remembers anything that should be added, then please let me know. That must be Laura Schneider.
Yes.
Welcome, Laura. Laura is our new zoning officer, village prosecutor.
I went over to the little talks. Oh, just plain white.
Yeah, well, and we could have gotten away with that as much like tonight, but that's kind of unusual for these meetings, actually. Okay. One thing I will note, just so that we can get this handled when these minutes are officially entered, is that I noticed that Adam Walter is not included on the list of representatives of the applicant. So that should be added, just so we're clear where he is here, particularly since he was sort of taking the lead on the effective applicant presentation. So with that amendment in mind, is there a motion to approve the amended minutes?
Also no.
Second? All in favor?
I think so.
Both? Great, thank you very much. In terms of my comments tonight, I would like to, if I can find it, just, we have, as you all know, we have a very talented board with lots of talented members on it, and sometimes they get special recognition. And I just wanted to alert the board that our very own Victoria Romanoff has received an award for some of her local work here. She received an award that was noted in the Truensburg Historical, or no, I'm sorry, the Ulysses Historical Society newsletter for the summer, and I thought I might just read a little bit about it because it sounds pretty special. "In the last few years," we're talking about the chapel now outside Grove Cemetery and the work, and then, "In the last few years, the chapel's near neighbor, Victoria Romanoff, walking her dog from her home at the end of Falls Street, noticed the building's stance was growing less solid. She saw that some of the stones, particularly those supporting the dramatic curved archway, were slowly moving out of line. Romanoff is a principal in Victoria Romanoff and Associates' long-established and respected restoration and design services and a dedicated opponent of un-disciplined movement in foundations." The dedicated opponent, un-disciplined movement. Disciplined movement is okay.
Unacceptable.
So she approached David Allen, the now president of the cemetery board, and offered to take on for free supervision of the needed repairs. Romanoff has offered her expertise gratis to the community that she calls home. Among other Truensburg Ulysses for world work, and this is an addition by the way, I worked in other places too, the firm has done the first Presbyterian church, the main street liquor store, and sundries in the moving and restoration of former Babcock office near So I don't think I need to go on anymore, but there's very, you know, very nice little piece on our very own planning board member, and congratulations.
I only have one second addition. If my dog scooch, the one I walk with, doesn't pee on all four corners of the building, we don't do the job. Superb is that.
He won't have it, or you won't have?
We don't. He approves, project.
All right, very good. I also want to mention to the board, most of you probably already know this, but I just wanted to do it for the record, that this will in fact be my last meeting as chair as a planning board. The mayor will be announcing a new chair at the August for trustees meeting, and I will continue on as a member of the planning board, but without the gavel. And as you know, the reasons for that have to do with family situation out on the West Coast, so, in any event, so that will be a little bit of a change for our next meeting. Okay, we have plenty of important things to do tonight, so we should get going. And the first item up is to hear from Lance from MRB, who's, can you just give us a quick little update on where things are in terms of your technical engineering review of the application, including back and forth? And, you know, we appreciate where that stands.
So we issued, our last comment letter was issued back in April from provisions that were generated from our February meeting. At this time, we're going through a review of what we consider preliminary site plans and some of the new plans and data that has been provided as part of this application, which is also running parallel with the seeker review, which is basically where this board is at this time. With that being said, we've gone through two review letters so far from our office that have been formally issued to the board, to the applicants. And they have since responded back based on, I think, around the time of last board meeting. We got a response letter answering all of our questions, or providing a response to all of our questions. We've got several reports back to those questions and revised print as well. So at this moment, MRB is going through, we have in fact gone through all the comments to verify the responses and what the intent is going forward. And based on our review of that comment letter, it appears that they're going to make an attempt to address all of our comments. At the same time, there's still some technical issues that we're trying to work out, for example, utility alignment in the roadway, which is a standard comment that we go through in the process, and we'll work with them to continue to figure out the rest of the for the issues, excuse me, for the utilities. We are also working through drainage calculations, but it's take time because as we go through the seeker process, there's minor adjustments that are maybe impossible to the facilities based on the potential impacts that the board's identified as part of the project. So we're working through that process as well. Due to the process that we're going through with seeker, we've since received all input and comments from all the agencies, Army Corps, DEC, all the department staffs, those who chose to comment on our, I guess, our application submitted. We haven't received anything in terms of comments back, most of whom were strictly no objection to the board meeting agency, which as you know, we already declared. So at this point, we're going through every board, and they're waiting for our comments back then, as it relates to the revisions that have been provided. I hope to have our comment letter out next week, at the earliest. We're just trying to wrap up our review of the drainage comments at this point. Most of our comments are technical in nature. There isn't anything that I, I believe a lot of our comments are continuation of the first go-around, just to get a little bit more input. We divided them up into preliminary comments and final comments, and that's what we're trying to work through now, is more the preliminary comment aspect, to get us a plan that if the board, when the board gets to that point, we have a plan that's ready to look forward with preliminary, if, in fact, we get to that spot. We also, at the same time, review final comments as well, because as I mentioned before, we're trying to do an overall thorough review upfront, so there's no big items, and as we get to that stage, we've been working through those comments to shed some of the emphasis a little bit more. I guess at this point, I give it back to the board that if there's any specific comments I remember these letters, either that you've received or had questions on, I more than want to answer.
Yeah, on these ending things, are, is there anything sort of outstanding that will prevent us from at least getting started down at EAF?
No. You know, the plans for the most part, as you see them, are the plans that here we're reviewing as part of the seeker. The changes that are being made through the MRB letter, more, you know, the infrastructure alignment, moving the pipe ten feet this way, five feet this way, the wetlands are the wetlands, they're staying as wetlands on-site, and the modifications that they're proposing to make to them, in some cases some failed, those have changed from day one to now. They have, the only thing that's, I think, very, as it relates to that, is just furthering information divided from Army Corps justifying the wetland locations. As it relates to drainage ponds, the ponds themselves are sized and located where they're ultimately, if we get that one, would be located, or just working through the calculations and modifications to the slopes or the pipes that are going to those locations.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
I had a quick question. Has anybody looked at the site since our rather intense abnormal and deranged weather?
I'm pretty sure MRB hasn't. But, 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 but.
Anybody?
I rode, actually, this afternoon, and I rode all the way around, and was more interested in the concerned housing around, but I didn't walk into the field, I did last heavy rainstorm, walk into the field.
This, this one was pretty unlike anything.
Well, the last one, I meant, I took it, it was a wicked awful downpour, and it was so rapid and fast. This one was right two days later. Did you go through?
I just, I sort of peeked in and didn't look great, not in any means. I mean, that is one of our overwhelming issues there, and I think we've discussed that from day one, but it is, yep.
Other questions for Lance? Okay, thank you very much. We'll hear more from Lance when we get to the beginnings of the review of the EAF. All right, so I also wanted to give the board a chance to ask the applicant any questions about the materials we received at the last meeting. In going through the material, my materials, I realized that it seemed to be like I was missing one packet of information that was distributed, and I wanted to make sure that everybody got all three of the correct volumes from the applicant. The one that seemed to be either, I mean, there was, it was a little bit unclear what, you know, we got a, we got a couple of thin, we got three thin ones, or two thin ones and one thick one, and the, one of the, one of the thin ones, it turns out, was actually a superseded version of the thick one. And there should have been, and that was the one I didn't have, one that was the response to the comments that were made at the May 24 public hearing. So this is, this was the comments, or the responses to comments made by, in general, made by the public at the public hearing. And what they, it was dated June 27. Yeah, I, I couldn't find it in among the, you know, the things that were delivered, but I just wanted to...
Is the date on there?
This, this one, this is June 27, and what would the...
Three dated June 27.
Yeah, so this would be response to comments from May 24 public hearings or something like that. Yeah. So we got, so check, when you, when you get back and have a chance, check to see whether you received the response comments from May 24 public hearing. I am virtually certain you received the response to comments from MRB group and the response to the letter from Von Schenck and King. Those are the other two volumes. So there may have been a little bit of confusion about the response to public comments.
Well, and there also one that was response to traffic.
Certainly. That was included in our MRB, or the, that was included in the Von Schenck response, because that was their traffic, so.
Right.
Okay, that's in the Von Schenck, that was in the Von Schenck response.
They mine came separate.
I had a second. For, Amy's got a separate letter, but we have attached it to the...
Okay.
Okay, it's checking to... Yeah, just, obviously, we just wanted to make sure you had everything.
Right.
We tried to coordinate with the town clerk, but for the village clerk, sometimes it gets a little active, particularly when you're in college, free, on a daily meeting. So, okay, so yeah, I just, I wanted to just be absolutely sure that we have those resources, because that, there'll be a piece of what we, you know, need to be up to speed on. Okay, any other questions for the applicants, now that we've had a little bit of a chance to review the documents, the responses to MRB were, you know, fairly technical, but, you know, if you have questions about that? Or the responses to the Von Schenck and King letter?
I think I might have mentioned this already a little bit earlier, but MRB, if we have any unanswered questions, they need to be, I just want to understand this correctly, need to be resolved during the preliminary, not the final site plan, are you correct?
Well, yeah, it depends what they relate to. I mean, if they're unanswered questions, for example, related to something that will come in the seeker, we'll look at the answers before we, you know, answer those questions or whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, doesn't look to me like anybody else's wiggling in their seat wanting to answer questions, so, okay, very good. All right, so let's go ahead and jump into the review of the EAF. My goal on this tonight is obviously not to get through everything. I'm hoping that we can at least get through part one, since that's the part that was submitted with the site plan application some time ago, and has already been completed by the applicant. Of course, that doesn't mean that we don't have to go through it and make sure the board comfortable with the way they concluded it, and we don't have any issues with that, and also make sure that all of the questions are answered and the form is really complete. With respect to part two, my hope is to sort of do a triage on that tonight, and maybe get through the sort of the easy stuff that is, you know, is clearly not applicable or, you know, easily resolved moving forward, and then see where we are. And as we do that, it'll also allow us to sort of highlight those issues that are going to be, and ones that we are going to need to focus on and spend more time discussing and be comfortable with. But hopefully, we can eliminate, you know, several of the questions in part two, several parts in part two, and be left with the real meat of the environmental issues as of being the... And Lance has gone a bucket beyond the fall and has brought along some, some forms for us to, to refer to, as well as a part two, that you want to explain how you handled the part two.
Sure, so I brought copies of the EAF part one, which, as I said, you're going to go through that today. Part one, I think we've mentioned this before, basically, the part one is your site. It's, it's all the information per the site. So it has information about the water table, the dry rock, the soil, you've got the location of the soil, flatlands, and then also deals with agencies, in terms of who they had to coordinate with, and contact, and that was definitely information. That data that you'll be reviewing tonight is basically the basis for the part two. The part two has 18 categories. Those 18 categories specifically reference, they have reference to the EAF part one categories. When the EAF gets completed, if you do it electronically through the DEC website, several of those categories get automatically filled in where you can't adjust. And now, the DEC uses their information to make those answers. Some of those answers are, they may say, you have wetlands, but you're not relating wetlands on your site, they're, they're 10, 10 lots old, but because it's in the proximity of the... So you'll see some particular comments, I think, in this particular EAF part one, where there's items that are identified because it was triggered by the EAF map, but they're not necessarily, or potentially located on this site or adjacent to it. My point is, is that when you go through the part two, those same type of events that you've identified in part one are clearly identified here. So if you're going to use the part one to answer your part two, that makes sense.
Sure, so like, for example, with plant or animalized species, if it's been identified in this 30 mile radius or whatever, it could make appear on the part one.
So typically, what I've done in the past, and it's done differently everywhere, it's just a matter of supporting your information in my opinion. If it's triggered in the EAF part one, regardless if it is on-site or not on-site, I typically identify it as a potential item for impact. And then it's our job, our job, I say, staffs, the planning board, to go through those potential impacts and determine whether or not it's an impact or not. So when we get to that part two, several of the items that I've identified as potential impacts are not actual items of impact, were strictly based on the CAF part one, in those areas that were triggered based on the CAF part one. All right, you agree? So I think for now, we'll just give you the part one, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Question, when we're going through this, obviously, this is development, so everything has, is going to be impacted in one way or another. How does one determine whether it's a significant impact or not significant?
So, go ahead. That's, you know, we're, we're going to evaluate when we get to those points, those specifics. They give us examples in the part two of some areas where you typically would see an impact. Let's say, for example, rain disturbance activities, number one, an impact, some of them specifically reference depth of water table is less than three feet. Well, your question then would be, is it an impact or is it not an impact? Well, you would refer to the EAF part one, and the EAF part one would tell you whether or not there's depth of water table zero to three feet. So if it is, you would say, okay, well, it's, it's a potential impact then. Now the question is, is it large or is it small? Basically, through the review process, through our review process, through their coordination efforts with other agencies, they have to mitigate to that. So if it's zero to three feet of water table in the areas of the site, there is requirements that they have to adhere to as part of the sweat, stormwater control, and the infrastructure that they put in the ground, which they would be obligated to be through the mitig process. So in my opinion, a lot of times when we see those type of comments, whether it's a large or a small, it's more defined by what the, the, the board themselves are concerned with as it relates to that.
Yeah, I think it's hand me part two, I want to just, this, this is a good question, Guy. It's one that's really largely left to our judgment. Here's, here's the advice that the DEC gives us in terms of looking at this. I always enjoy this. After giving us a bunch of information about, you know, checking the S-box and the no-boxes, then they, they get to the softer advice. And so the first one is, a reviewer is not expected to be an expert in environmental analysis. That's the first piece of advice. If you're not sure or undecided about the size of an impact, it may help to review the sub-questions for the general question and consult the workbook. That's the seeker workbook. And it, you know, it gives you some guidance, but again, a lot of it has to do with what your experts have told you, what you know about things for yourself, and what the public has had to say. When answering a question, consider all components of proposed activity, that is, the whole action, so not individual pieces, but what's an impact relating to the whole action. Consider the possibility for long-term accumulative impacts as well as direct impacts, not just immediate, but, you know, out there on the timeframe. Answer the question in a reasonable manner, considering the scale and context of the project. That's the last piece of advice, the DEC. So, it, it's not black and white, and that's why we get the blue box. All right. So I propose that we give start by just, and if anybody else has better ideas, please, but this is a way we have done this in the past, and it seems to make sense to me. I think we should just start with part one, got the form in front of us, and go through it, item by item, and make sure that we are comfortable with the descriptive information and the background information, as Lance explained, that's contained in part one. So first, the first part of this is the description, project and the sponsor information. It gives us an address, a description, which is brief, but does seem to be to cover all the relevant pieces of information, of the applicant's sponsor, and the property owner. Now...
I thought it was sundial.
Yeah.
It is sundial, sundial.
Okay.
It's just Sunday.
Sunday. You should get that right.
Oh, my goodness, someone cheated. Oh, no, auto correction.
I guess we should also fill in the information on the product contact, address, telephone, mail, all that kind of information, since it's on the form.
It's reserved.
It's the same, so we can just write the same, okay? It's not the same. All right, same as sponsor.
If not same as sponsor, okay.
All right, governmental approvals, funding, or sponsorship. So we have, this is a list of agencies and boards that had some role in this application. So the first one on there is town board, which is checked yes, or village board, just these, which is checked yes. Village planning board commission, checked yes. The city council, the town or village, some of the boarding appeals is checked no. I should point, that may be a yes ultimately, at least for a special use permit, no variances, but Matt, in his final days, had made a determination that the nursery school would not require a special use permit, but that the community room would, if it was open to the outside public. We kind of were discussing what that meant when we talked to Guy, we said, we'd wait for the new zoning officer. Glad you're here, Laura. Give me that first call tomorrow, so we'll dig into that further. They were included as an agency, just in case Lance did that. Thank you, Lance. So that may be a yes, but if it is, it's a yes for a special use permit for a community room. But the idea is the community room is not open to the public. So...
I'm going to check yes and just list it as, as possible, as a special use permit review.
Yeah, okay, so we'll change that to a yes. Yeah, okay, so change that to a yes. And then the agency action required is potential, yes you can.
And as Mr. Walker mentioned, they were included in that list of agencies that we call agency.
Other local agencies, Village of Koomsberg Water Department, yes. County agencies, Tompkins County Community Development Terms, yes. Regional agencies, no. We have notified them already, and state agencies, yes.
Where is the Tompkins County Community Development?
That is a fund of financing that is for affordable housing that the county administers. It's a pot of money that comes from Cornell, the county, and the city. State agencies, yeah, all the normal health and environmental and other state agencies on there. And the federal agencies, the Army Corps, and they're checked yes as well. Coastal resources, and this one, everything there is checked no. It's not within a coastal area, it doesn't even in the waterway, or any of the other, it's not a coastal erosion hazard area, et cetera. So those are all checked no.
Just for clarification, I want to interrupt you.
No, no, it's fine.
This is one of the automatic fill-ins too, through the EAF map or something.
Based on the location.
Once you take your location, the DEC then plunges it to the dominant questions as. And this is one of those, the sponsor automatically gets it.
Okay, so, and there's, I don't see any reason that we should change any of those answers. It's not our own local knowledge, okay? Planning and zoning. So the first one, that's part C. Will administrative legislative adoption or amendment of plan, local law ordinance, rule, regulation be the only approval which must be granted to enable the proposed action to proceed? Any answer to that is no. Lots of approvals needed. Okay, the second part, adopted land use plans. Do any municipally adopted comprehensive land use plans included the site where the proposed action would be located? So the answer to that is yes. If yes, would the comprehensive plan include specific recommendations for the site where the proposed action would be located? Answer is yes.
I was looking through the comprehensive plan. Where, what, where is that referenced specifically? Like, what?
So anytime you've got components of a comprehensive plan that are consistent with the project, like we want more affordable housing, we would say yes. The comprehensive plan's very high level, and it's targeted more...
I guess, yeah, when I read that, I was kind of thinking more like site-based.
Yeah, most comprehensive plans don't reference anything for stuff.
Yeah, that was where I was confused.
Yeah, so, the question generally because of that is interpreted wrong.
So not site-specific specifically?
Not site-specific. I mean, by answering it yes, it, you know, it just means, okay, you know, we'll be looking at the comprehensive plan, which we will be anyway. So, you wouldn't want to say no, because then, then it might be some really, uh, whether the comprehensive plan is... Okay. Next one is, is the site of a proposed action within any local or regional special plan history? For example, Greenway, brownfield opportunity area, designated state or federal heritage area, watershed management plan, et cetera. The answer to that is no. Is the proposed action located wholly or partially within an area listed in the adopted municipal open space plan or an adopted municipal farmland protection plan? The answer to that is no. Okay, the section on zoning. Is the site of proposed action located in the municipality with an adopted zoning law or ordinance? And the answer is yes. And if so, what is the zoning classification? And that is residential one. Is the use permitted or allowed by a special or conditional use permit? And the answer to that is yes. I'm not aware of a special one. Is it allowed or by special use permit? Doesn't mean you don't need a rezoning to do it. Oh, I see, is it permitted or allowed? Or allowed, but okay.
It's a common point of confusion, but a lot of times I hear people say, it's not allowed, you need site time review, or it's not allowed, you need a special use permit. The truth is, if you're engaged in special use permitting or site time review, it's allowed as a right, just the approval. There's a reason for a heightened group need to do more mitigation when you have special use permits and site time review.
All right, so the answer to that is yes. All right, is a zoning change requested as part of the proposed action? No, there is no zoning change.
And we're clear on the school, Miss Bowery, in a residential area.
If a school is... Okay, existing community services. In what school district is the project located? Trumford Central. What police or other public protection forces serve the project site? Tompkins County Sheriff and Village of Koomsberg Police. Which fire protection, emergency medical services serve the project site? Both Trumford Fire Department and Trumford BMS. What parks serve the project site? Playground area located at Trumford Central School within one half mile. And again, state park located within three miles. Okay? Project details, proposed and potential development. What is the general nature of the proposed action? Residential, industrial, commercial, recreational, mixed, et cetera, it's residential. The total acreage of the site of proposed action? Nineteen point one five acres. Total acreage should be physically disturbed, fourteen point nine more acres.
Andy, do we know? I know we've got two rounds of changes as a result of MRV comments. I assume that number has changed somewhat.
It did change some, yes, and it's in the revised range report, so.
So...
I mean, it might be, if you just put plus...
Plus or minus.
It could have changed in a matter of...
Total disturbed.
Total loss.
Total acreage under control by the applicant or project sponsor? Again, nineteen point one five acres. C, is the proposed action an expansion of an existing project for use? No, it's not, it's a field. D, is the proposed action a subdivision, or does it include a subdivision? Yes. If yes. Purpose of the subdivision, residential, industrial, commercial? It says, loose speak right of way, single and multifamily residential. That's the description of the subdivision. Is a cluster slash conservation layout proposed? The answer is no. Now, I assume that that's some, that's a sort of formal kind of...
Yeah, there's separate zoning that would allow you to do what we call the cluster subdivision or conservation subdivision, so...
I see.
Here, going through that, I'll do a few specifics that we recorded, and that won't check.
Yeah, because I mean, in a formal sense, this involves some clustering, but it's not a formal...
Chase area, that won't check. Both are pieces of that process.
Okay. Number lots proposed, fifteen.
That should actually be changed to fourteen, because intervisions would move combine lot twelve with the private drive parcel, so that should be fourteen, actually, probably be on the first page.
As well.
In the description, what action? Go ahead, part four, fourteen part four.
Oh, yeah, fourteen. Thank you. All right. Will the proposed action be constructed in multiple phases? And this means, yes. If yes, total number of phases anticipated at four. That's still what we're anticipating. Do you have a view of this? Still four? Still four, yeah, still four. Anticipated commencement date of phase one, including demolition, eleven month? Oh, so it would be November twenty nineteen. Okay. Anticipated completion date of final phase would be November twenty twenty-three. That hasn't changed. Generally describe connections or relationships among phases, including contingencies or progress of one phase may determine timing of operation of future phases. And the answer to that is, the roadway must be installed for each phase to begin. And the roadways and then first. The rental portion, nursery school, and some of the affordable for sale homes could be developed in one phase. The for-sale portion would be developed in smaller phases as lots sell and financing is secure.
Rick, before you go, turn this page back to D, back where we changed the number last to fourteen. The minimum lot size stays the same, but we combine lot twelve. That maximum size would up to three hundred thirty-four thousand four hundred miles square feet. That matches the provided plan.
Three forty-four thousand four hundred.
Thanks.
Yeah, question. In anticipated commencement date of phase included, what does demolition mean in this case?
I think if there were existing buildings...
Yeah, I assumed that there isn't, so that was just added because it's part of the text.
That's exactly, that's just part of...
And Tyler, actually, I have a question to you then about the last bullet, the connections or the relationships of the phases. So it would be developed in one phase, but in fact, would that be phase one? Does that matter? Is it significant to establish what happens in that phase at this time? Does it matter?
I don't think so. Essentially, as long as everybody understands what we're talking about, most of the construction is going to happen in one phase right up front. That's all the item and the chest stuff.
Right.
And then the for-sale lots, which are Cluddy's focus, would be as the lots sell. And remind you, Cluddy, how many residential, how many lots do...
There's nine or ten, but there's seventeen, I don't know. And the nurses.
And most of the site reefer would have to take place as far as, just because of the cuts in bills and the driving of the charter, it has to be billed as part of that first phase.
All right, correct that. Does the project include new residential uses? If yes, show numbers of units proposed. And then we have initial phase, four one family, one two family, two three family, forty-four multiple family. So at the completion, so that would be the initial phase, and describe the completion of all the phases, the same number of one families, four. Increase in the two families to twelve, increase in the three families to five, and increase in the multiple families to four more to fifty-two. And that would be the full amount, so.
If you add all those up, you get something.
Part G, does a proposed action include new non-residential construction, including expansion? And the answer is yes. And the total number of structures, one. That I assume is the nursery school.
Correct.
Yeah. Dimensions and feet of the largest proposed structure? So twenty-four feet high, eighty-six feet wide, and seventy-eight feet long. And like, so that's in the drawing. Approximate extent of building space to be heated or cooled? Forty-five hundred square feet, basically, the top. Part H, does the proposed action include construction or other activities that will develop in any impoundment of any liquids?
Can I get clarification on that? Extant of building space to be heated or cooled is forty-five hundred square feet of which?
The nurses' school.
Just the nurses'.
Yes, that's just the commercial guy. Phenomenal, I'm actually correct.
Okay. Other activities that will result in the impoundment of any liquids, such as creation of a water supply reservoir upon lake waste fluid or other storage? Answer is yes. Purpose of the impoundment is temporary storage of stormwater runoff. So then, if water impoundment, the principal source of the water, that is not groundwater, not surface water streams, it's other, and that is specified as surface water from the new development.
And so we've investigated, and so at this stage, that MRV is like, right, we don't think that groundwater should be checked as something that could be significant impact. Is that right?
Well, in terms of this question, yes. I think that the answer to this question corrected that when we're talking about impoundment of water as a basis for this question, the stormwater management facility is what they're identifying, and that is going to be storing the surface runoff from the site.
Okay.
There's no permanent pond in this.
No, they don't have a facility like pond, but they have bio-retention.
These are all detention or retention.
There will be little tiny pools at the beginning and the end of larger practice, and that, those are small little pockets to help us inside, so just the area. Most will have, they're saying why, but we're not creating large, you know.
Yeah, hopefully, the construction base, more or less, to settle up the settlement that takes place during the construction period.
All right, the approximate size of the proposed impoundment volume? Point eight five million gallons. Surface area of the impoundment, one point two four acres. Dimensions of the proposed dam or impounding structure? Three point five, maximum height, three point five feet, and seven hundred and forty feet total length. Construction materials for the proposed dam and impounding structure? Energy, earth, fill, rockwood, concrete. Seems like that's blank.
We look at the new earth.
Earth?
Yes.
And this is kind of weird, but this notion of height, that is depth. Okay. Like, huh. Grand pool. Or not, because it won't be standing for long.
And then the material is... It's three foot, come five feet deep, seven hundred and forty feet long. All right, project operations. Does the proposed action include any excavation, mining, or dredging during construction operations proposed? Not including general site preparation, creating, installation, facilities, or foundations, or all excavated materials will remain on site. So I assume the reason that that is answered no is because it meets the exception. So it is general site preparation, breeding, installation, facilities, foundations, all materials remain on site, so it doesn't count. What do you see the sub-questions under there, or do you, do you, if you're excavating or mining? And so the rest of these questions are only to be answered in that section if the first one is answered yes. So since you answered that no, those other ones are remaining unanswered, and that is entirely appropriate.
Can I ask a question? Just since that is no, and I'm assuming that no material will be removed from the site during the construction, during the preparation?
I think that relates only to the foundations part. Foundations where all excavated materials will remain on site. I don't know what their plans are with respect to the foundation. There are some kind of, is anything projected to go up site?
Majority are keeping up site.
Six minutes, six minutes up site, so you usually... Okay, well, yeah, so this says...
On having your bounds.
Where all excavated materials will remain on site.
There are no basements in any of the buildings, correct? As in, in other words, we're not taking tremendous amount of soil out and having to deal with it. The houses themselves and then including the large one is all a great, correct? The big building and the nursery, they don't have, yeah. It's hardly a site where you want a foundation, I mean, a basement.
So, you know, the. The basic plan is to do some excavating with respect to the building. But you don't have sort of like a plan to remove big pieces of earth or do any dredging or anything like that. Does that answer your question?
It sounds like it does, although I heard of it mostly or for the most part, so that I didn't hear like.
Let's be affirmative, can we be affirmative? It's all staged, I suppose.
Okay.
And if that changes, then we'll discuss.
And there's protocol for that process, which means that there's special things they have to adhere to as part of the removal of the, that verify the location is going. There's a procedure that is applied with D E C, they're in terms of material that would be reading. So that information will be presented more fit there. I did, as part of our college, we asked him to have us for cut fill calculations, which typically provided as part of the final. So when we get that, that gives a better idea of what the challenge of the site is.
All right, so that's that subsection now running subsection B. Would proposed action cause or result in alteration of increase or decrease in size of or encroachment into any existing wetland, water body, shoreline, beach, or adjacent area? Answer is yes. If yes, identify the wetland or water body which would be affected. And the answer to that is likely jurisdictional wetlands A and B and likely isolated wetlands D and E that is shown on the boundary and topographic map. The U S. U S. U S Army Corps of Engineers. U S Army Corps of Engineer review of the jurisdictional stats of all site and site wetlands using the process.
What is a jurisdictional one?
Determination of, so basically, they, as part of this project, they went out and did it, had a specialist go out and delineate wetlands on site because the mapping sources that are available for us are usually old and outdated and not as accurate. That's what Army Corps was saying, listen, you can use those maps how you want, but we need justification to determine what amount of wetland is on site or not. And these days pretty much everything is, then the, the end of wetland. So with that being said, the applicant went out and had a specialist go out and walk the site, delineate where the wetlands were identified. They prepared a report, they sent it to Army Corps for just, for jurisdiction to determine who's responsible, what type of pond, what type of wetland it is, and whether or not certain permits would be required. It's an isolated wetland, which I think two of them, two of them have been identified. That just means that they're not connected hydraulically to anything else. So those are usually allowed to be changed or modified during the project without any kind of permit or approval governing that. The ones that are hydraulically connected, which are justified both in their wetland determination and the jurisdiction review that was provided by Army Corps in response to that, identified for that work, of which there's allowances for mitigation to those, those wetlands. That is covered by the nationwide permit. It's just a set number that says if you're within the, that's the number, excuse me, you're covered by this permit without having to do any mitigation. If you go over that threshold of disturbance or filling in allowing, then you have to apply for separate permit from that agency, whether it be D E C for state lines or federal, Army Corps for federal limits.
Jurisdiction just means that if you does, you doesn't have jurisdiction because it is or isn't a water of the United States.
Sorry, never got to that point.
Not yet. Is that a final document that it's two bodies or two reservoirs of water that have been, to whatever effect designated? And that's the end of the report, that's it, that's the final one?
I'm sure so from Army Corps, who is the jurisdiction review powers of that, of that report? Made the determination, I believe, that's an M R V response that was provided by the applicant. They have a section of the report that includes, include Army Corps responses and determination, which is basically an agreement that two of the, two of the wetlands identified with the, the numbering and shown on the plans are isolated and then that four of them are considered Army Corps wetlands and require a permit. Well, in this case, nationwide permit because they're under the disturbance threshold. And that's reported in the M R V response.
Okay, and what does that actually mean? How, does it mean how close you can build next to these? How you respect them or does?
So if, if you're going to disturb a wetland, we have to coordinate with Army Corps and D E C. That was not as part of this project. Secondly, we also had to do one on the determination, delineation, which was done to determine where those locations are. All of that has been done. What this means now is that because we reported to Army Corps and to D E C, which in this case is no wetlands on site, they're all owned and maintained and monitored and approved by Army Corps. They, as part of their site plan review process that we're going through, developed the plan. They determined how much of that wetland area of all the wetlands that they were going to disturb. They submitted that report into the Army Corps and the Army Corps determined whether or not it's covered under the nationwide permit by acreage and threshold numbers that were provided. And if it is, that's what's been reported in the Army Corps responses. If they were over that number, Army Corps would then respond and say, okay, well, since you're going over our square foot threshold, we're going to require you to do further mitigation on site, some other means to justify allowing us to allow you, or justification for us to allow you to fill in or modify that wetland area. In this case, they're not over the threshold. They're covered by what is called a nationwide permit, which is just a basic permit that has any and everybody privileged to disturb wetlands as long as they're under that threshold. Obviously, with coordination of the Army Corps to confirm that, which in this project we did.
It means the disturbance is so minor, the Army Corps of Engineers has issued a nationwide permit. For anybody who wants to do this activity, you can do it without doing any mitigation. It's just considered such a minor disturbance to your weapons. And everything we said in here back in December, the court confirmed through in March. And that's the stuff that we've devised in the last.
We said likely in this one because we hadn't gotten the determination, but now I guess we do have jurisdictional wetlands and isolated wetlands. And just to clarify, we haven't officially applied to the nationwide permit. There is actually a process, so you get your site plan approval, you go for a permit. At that point, you apply to nationwide permit, please stay in that tenth minute here. And if you have mitigation party, once you go over that, you make your mitigation party work.
But there was a, I mean, so we could remove this two likelys there?
You could. Okay. Describe how the proposed action would affect that water body or wetland. For example, excavation, fill, placement structures, or alteration of panels, tanks, and shore lanes. Indicate extent of activities, alterations, and additions in square feet or acres. So this is likely jurisdictional wetland A would say jurisdictional wetland A fill at point oh three acres. Jurisdictional wetland B fill at point oh five acres. Total fill of likely jurisdictional wetland equals, yes, it does, point oh eight acres. And the likely isolated, or isolated wetland D fill is at point oh one acres. Isolated wetland E is fill is point oh five acres. So the total fill of the isolated wetlands is point oh six acres.
And just, I see the map with the, with the, there's maybe the D E C E, these are still all the utilities here.
Yeah, actually, our plans were, were only disturbing point oh two acres of wetland A. So we're still under that tenth acre with the current plan as revised, disturbed for the class.
That's A. So the wetland locations.
All are responsible.
And further supported with the Army Corps' response.
So again, point two, the total of that would be point oh seven.
Will the proposed action cause or result in disturbance to bottom sediments? Answer is yes. If yes, describe sediments to be removed prior to filling activities. I'm not sure what that refers to.
And it does imply removal of soils, right?
Sediments would be removed.
Right, and so we're, we're steering those small pockets of A and B right now for sediments.
You're saying very small amounts?
Those will be pulled out, probably just put that in the landscape areas.
Oh, in other words, retained on the site.
On the site, under the area that doesn't have traffic during your structural.
Will the proposed action cause or result in the destruction or removal of aquatic vegetation? The answer is no. And some there is, right? So these wetlands are sort of far field, so that's actually one of the conditions we're having, but that's a completely different discussion. No mitigation is necessary for filling isolated wetlands or filling less than one point oh acres of jurisdictional wetlands. And Army Corps permits will be obtained. Give that a line. Will the proposed action use or create a new command for water? Yes. Total anticipated water treatment command per day, eleven thousand gallons per day. Will the proposed action obtain water from an existing water, public water supply? Yes. If yes, name the district or service area, building is Truensburg. Does the existing public water supply have capacity to serve the proposal? Yes. Is the project site in the existing district? Yes. Is expansion of the district needed? No. Do existing lines serve the project site? Yes. Will line extension, water line extension within an existing district be necessary to supply the project? Yes. If yes, describe extensions and capacity expansions proposed to serve the project. The answer to that is the extension of approximately thirty-one hundred linear feet of eight-inch ductile iron and water main. And the source of the supply to the district would be building twelve. If the new water supply district or service area proposed to be formed, like is a new water supply district or service area proposed to be formed to serve the project site? So then the rest are if yes, apply. If water supply will be from wells, public or private, maximum public capacity, thirteen hundred and sixty gallons per minute. So that comes from the engineers who.
Yeah, so it's a lot of idea. I don't know that all the numbers are coming in, but I can coordinate the whole map. I mean, we'll take this from our office.
All right, will the proposed action generate liquid waste? Yes. So the total anticipated liquid waste generated per day, eleven thousand gallons per day. Nature of liquid waste to be generated, for example, sanitary, wastewater, industrial, or if it's a combination, describe all components and approximate volumes and proportions of each. Okay, so it's not a combination, sanitary wastewater is what we're going to generate eleven thousand gallons a day.
I don't recall sending a letter, do we have a letter that says that this passed?
John, you know, we did, at least in our area where I live, we've had problems with the water. It's been discovered and there have been some issues. I would love to see more, you know, up to date for public works, sort of analysis of what's going on. And also, they had a huge problem with wastewater because the container burst and replace it. So there have been some issues there. I think it'd be good if we updated our knowledge on just what, the water's been really mucky in the houses on Cemetery Road and Falls and some other streets.
And that, is that Deb Walken, she's a water department?
Is what?
Is, is meaning Deb Walken, so there's a water department here?
Yes.
I feel like there was a, because I think she had shown on a report, because I feel like somebody asked that at a village board meeting not so long ago when she was explaining why, and I can't remember the answers.
But I think there's a report out there.
It'd be good for us to know that it's all running down and etc.
Maybe there is, there is a report out there. Tom, is that something that you can pick your hands on? Lance, when you say your team, you've got wastewater engineers on site and water engineers, they coordinate directly with the.
Correct.
People that are in the subs.
We would have some additional information on that. I don't know the reasons for the, the, I don't know.
Lot of lines were broken, they're old iron pipes. And there was roadwork on Cemetery Road. It could be in conjunction with that, but we definitely had issues.
Well, doesn't follow the five, if anybody in our office who works directly with.
Yeah, I agree right together.
But I don't think that a weird issue specifically. I do know that there's some force main issues. This is all being served by gravity. So the force main sanitary issues, I think it's more to do with capacity of the pump stations.
That's what failed.
Yeah, so pump stations are having problems, pumping the sewer. So capacity through a force main could be an issue. This project is being served by gravity. So that's coming from a different direction. And I know there isn't any issue with the gravity.
But we could definitely follow.
We have said.
Actually, it'd be helpful. Okay, so let's see, the last one was generation of liquid waste, sorry. So the next one is, will the proposed action use any existing public wastewater treatment facilities? Yes. The Truensburg district is a though, Truensburg, does it have capacity to serve the project? Yes. Is the project site in the existing district? Yes. And do we need to expand the district? No. Do the existing sewer lines serve the project site? Yes. Will line extension within the existing district be necessary to serve the project? Yes. Describe the extensions and capacity expansions proposed. Extension of gravity sewers from the site to South Street. So that would, those will connect to the sewage system on South Street. Will a new wastewater sewage treatment district be formed to serve the project site? No. So the remainder, there's, there's some subsections there that only apply if it's, yes, so give it to them. If public facilities will not be used, describe plans to provide wastewater treatment for the project, including specifying the receiving water. Public, oh, we're not, we're not using Seattle. And describing. All right, so we're on to E. Will the proposed action disturb more than one acre and create stormwater runoff either from leak point sources? Ditches, high soils that are, that are concentrated towards the stormwater, or non-point sources? Sheet for during construction or post-construction? Answer is yes. If yes, how much impervious surface will be created in relation to total size of the project parcel? Four point six three acres of impervious surface, surface.
Should we change to four point six nine and actually reset it?
And nine point one acres, which is the parcel size. Of that, four point six nine acres will be impervious. Describe the types of new point sources, ditches, pipes, soils, and curves. Where will the stormwater runoff be directed? I mean, onsite stormwater management facilities or structures adjacent property, ground, or onsite water, surface water, or offsite surface waters. And the plan here is onsite stormwater management facilities. Or as the guys seem to call it, practices. All right, if, and that one is not applicable, so okay, will stormwater runoff flow to adjacent properties? Yes. And does proposed plan minimize impervious surfaces, use impervious materials or collect? And does proposed plan minimize impervious surfaces, use impervious materials, or collect and reuse stormwater? Yes.
Impervious materials or not reducing it, but we are...
And it is full.
And since this notion of runoff and then the term adjacent property means we're going to go on to South Street and use stormwater, what is the adjacent property?
Would just be the neighboring parcels, so any contiguous parcels. So we're not, we are breaking on the onsite stormwater facilities, whatever, we throw those to neighboring properties, so that's the, maybe it will be our site.
So you're not keeping, you're not adding up, just keeping on-site. It will continue to flow?
As it already does. And it must flow at the same rate. It cannot be increased as per, right? Okay, just clarifying for adjacent property owners to maybe...
What you have to remember, again, I mean, we covered the previous question, we were talking about 0.85 million gallons of storage onsite. I think we already made the point earlier that rain recently didn't look good. There's no stormwater handling onsite now. It's just, as it runs, and we know the groundwater's a little high, so it's just running right off the neighboring properties and it's causing problems. So this will create an opportunity to create onsite storage and drainage and release it slowly after the rain stops, which typically is the whole reason we have this program. So keep that in mind. All right. Does the proposed action include or will it use onsite one or more sources of air emissions, including fuel, combustion, waste, incineration, or other processes or operations? Answer is no. Series of questions that only apply if the answer is yes, so we'll skip those. Will any air emission sources named in the DVO require safe air? Well, we've already said they don't, so the answer is no. And those questions you can skip as well. Will the proposed action generate or emit methane? The answer is no. You can skip a bunch of questions there. Will the proposed action result in the release of air pollutants from open air operations or processes such as quarry or landfill operations? The answer is no. Will the proposed action result in substantial increase in traffic above present levels or generate substantial new demand for transportation facilities or services? Then the answer is no. So I guess there the issue is substantial. Will the proposed action result in substantial increase in traffic above present levels or generate substantial new demand for transportation facilities or services? And when you get to part two, you're going to see that the DUC has created something like 100 vehicles per hour during peak would be considered substantial. So we've done traffic studies to confirm this. And we had the traffic studies when we filled this out, and we feel quite clearly the studies demonstrate there is a significant change in traffic levels. And at this point, both our engineer and your engineer have confirmed that that's true.
Now, I recall that there's, it's not substantial, but it's like 70 cars per hour. It's my understanding is that...
Equated to three. Traffic in...
Traffic in the...
It's a person.
That's 40% of management, 24 cars.
It's the cars associated with the project.
Yes, I remember specifically asking.
Okay, well, it's 40%. The highest peak is the PM peak and it's 57 enter and 46 exit. But not 100.
And substantially 100 exiting and entering or 100?
It's 100, it's 100 trips arriving at an intersection. So what's happening is it doesn't add up to 100 because of the distribution. Did you hear that again? Because when, so what, the traffic leaves the two driveways, the two entrances to the site, it goes in multiple directions. And so what that 100 trips is asking is, are we adding 100 trips to any one intersection? The answer is no.
Okay. Now, I think the last time we talked about this or heard about it, the phase, the phasing of this project, the number of years that there'll be construction there. Have all the vehicles entering for the reasons of construction and developing the site? Are they, is everything included in that number in terms of vehicles and sizes of vehicles?
So this number specifically looks at the trips that will be ongoing once the site is constructed and...
This is, this is after the construction phase, not with the vehicles.
Right, because construction is in the construction phase.
Correct. So the construction phase, again, 98% of the construction takes place in the front end before anybody lives there. The remaining construction in those postiers of those single, old family homes that cluttered us. If you're looking for more of a breakdown, we can certainly give you more detail. We provided a lot. But if you want something specific, you just let us know. That's what we're here for.
Yeah, because the hours of construction, seven, seven, weekly days? And, you know, I know it's difficult, but would you want to live next to it is another question.
You know, I hope, I hope that's what it is. Oh, you're not here. So, you know, I'm looking at the general question, which is about substantial decrease in traffic, but then I'm looking at what they're looking for. If you answer yes to that. And it's all information that will be relevant to us, right? You know, looking at, even when we're looking in part two, even though we don't reach the 100-car threshold, the number of parking stations, whether there's access to public transportation, all those kind of things are relevant information for purposes of the application. So I guess my inclination would be to say, let's say yes on this, and then fill in the information that we get as a result of doing that, and handle it that way. Anybody have a problem with that? I don't think it commits us to anything. Your call at the end of the thing? Yeah.
Because if we say no, then we don't ever have to revisit traffic, is that...
No.
No, you know, we...
We still have to review it.
Part two is still going to require a part one. This is a general question, and what it's asking is, are you going to trigger a substantial threshold? Are you going to substantially increase traffic above ambient levels based upon certain standards? And I believe that there have been at least two traffic studies that have said no. Whether or not there is nonetheless a traffic impact still will be measured in part two. And whether or not there is a condition that you feel is warranted addressing traffic or pedestrian flow is still part of your site reprocess.
So what is the difference between answering yes or no to that question?
It's a question of what you believe is accurate. And when you first read the question, I think you had the correct interpretation of it. And that is that the key word right here in part one is substantial. Because if you trigger substantial, then they're going to start asking how many tractor-trailers. And what they're really looking at when they ask this type of question is more of a commercial. This is really geared more towards commercial activity. You can answer it as you feel is appropriate, because part two's part two. And part two's going to require you to look at it, and it's still going to measure what the traffic impacts are. This is really traditionally aimed more at a lot of diesel traffic, a lot of diesel trips, commercial use, like a Lincoln's warehouse type of situation where you have, or the warehouse, the great warehouse case in Rochester. So as a residential facility, residential facilities absent, you know, really triggering some of the bigger thresholds like 500 units and stuff like that, usually don't end up being substantial, but it's a very site-specific question. So again, I think you're free to answer it how you feel appropriate. In the end, ultimately, what the traffic engineers say is going to largely be controlling. And you're really just impact mitigation if you feel it's warranted based upon the final plan, how the traffic circulates, where it crosswalks, things like that.
It seems like if you do put in yes, then you can answer a number of the questions straight out of the box. If you, as you say, if you go down the list here. Yeah, actually, there's only one that's devoted to trailer truck over commercial.
Yeah, I don't know how we still, but I think, you know, I'm sort of trying to factor in here the fact that, you know, traffic has been one of the principal concerns of meaning. And, you know, regardless of what the traffic engineers say and what the national standards suggest, you know, this is, we're supposed to take this in context here. And I think since we have heard, you know, that there's, you know, substantial comment on this, concern about it, I think anything that we do to make sure that we take the hardest look possible at that is, at this stage, is appropriate. And so my inclination would be to say yes, go through the subsections, and, you know, and then deal with the really hard issue of the environmental impact when you get to part two. Right? Okay. Anybody advocating that approach? All right, so let's see. Okay, so if yes, when is heat traffic expected? And they said morning, evening, weekend, or randomly between hours of morning and night. Well, I think we pretty much know those morning and evening there. For commercial activities only, projected number of semi-trailer truck trips per day? Not applicable, yeah. Parking spaces, how does it add in? Parking spaces existing, euros, and proposed?
Yes.
154?
Yeah, that's what I thought. 154, that's a...
150 or 104, okay? And that increase or decrease, that means it's a 154. Does the proposed action include any shared use parking? I'm not sure what that is.
What is shared use parking?
Oh, it must be like, if there were another facility next door, are we going to share the parking? Are we going to share the school parking? The plan is not, does not include that, right?
I thought there was something about that.
I think the answer to this, the daycare, there'd be residential parking over there, so if people do need additional parking at daycare, they can just come up to the building, so. I would say, oh, there is, okay. If the proposed action includes any modification of existing roads, creation of new roads, or change in existing access described, well, it's going to, two access points.
Yeah.
Two access points on New South, Pennsylvania's public road, access to New South is proposed as a private drive. And the creation of the new roads would be within the site itself, the route, we call it that. It does, but doesn't move quite all the way. It's a public road. More of a half, semi, so. Call it a, yeah.
Horseshoe?
Semi-horseshoe. Oh, a horseshoe, okay. Horseshoe, low-shaped road in the subdivision. Okay, all right. Are public-private transportation services or facilities available within a half-mile of the proposed site?
Yes.
Not main street, but... Will the proposed action include access to public transportation or accommodations for use of hybrid, alternative fuel vehicles?
Long bikes.
Does that mean like, will there be a bus stop right there?
There needs a bus stop onsite or are you doing special parking spaces for vehicle and charging stations?
That part I understand, okay.
So now the answer is no.
Yeah.
Okay. Will the proposed action include plans for bicycle accommodations, actions to existing, external bicycle routes?
Yes.
All right, so, all right, we're done with that a little bit.
I just had one question, going back to the additions. Is that, that was part F. Does that include mission from, like, during construction?
The mission structure generally excludes residential projects.
I just, I've seen other forms where they, sort of, the impacts on air quality that include construction activities.
What's the, what's the, I don't know if you're referring to?
Page six, I don't know, sorry, page six.
Does the proposed action will use onsite one or more sources of air emissions, including fuel combustion, waste consideration, or other processes or operations? Doesn't seem like that calls it.
But to answer your question to some degree, part two does have a category for noise, light, air pollution that we get to go through and still discuss in some of your temporary construction items. And that might be one of the activities to check.
Okay, so. Okay, will the proposed action, I mean, that's real and commercial by the time we... It's not good. Mortify. Okay?
Well, one catches everybody.
Will the proposed action require a new or an upgrade to an existing sub? Oh, that's part of that one, too. Okay, so then skip that. Hours of operation? Answer all the apply, Monday to Friday, 7:00 to 7:00. Saturday, 8:30 to 5:00. What are, what is that referring to? Monday to Friday, 8:00 to 5:00? That's when the office is open or when the nursery is open?
That's during construction.
Second call.
See, during construction.
Oh, during construction, absolutely. During operations, 8:00 to 5:00, so that would be the school. The school. Will the proposed action produce noise that will exceed the existing ambient noise levels during construction, operation, both? Answer is yes. Provide details, including sources, time of day, and duration. During construction, typical noise associated with construction activities of this type, construction will be within normal operating hours. Will the proposed action remove existing natural barriers that could act as a noise barrier or screen? No. Will the proposed action have outdoor lighting? Yes. Describe the source, location, height, direction, proximity, there's actual structures. They're referencing there the project lighting plan. And where, where is the project lighting plan? So they have a public light plan, that's written in the back end of their set. And the light plan will show photometers, or the intensity of the lights, the illumination patterns, the form of the site, mostly parking on lighting, and it's a building lighting, I believe.
And with regard to items seen there in the noise barrier of the natural barrier, so are we saying the density of the trees and the objects that are being moved are not significant to block sound or light?
Yes. I mean, we're basically saying that there's going to remain a barrier of some sort on the site that, whether it be the existing vegetation or proposed landscaping that, or excuse me, village planning, or you guys, study a review of what we conventionally may have. Remember initially, we were picking out a lot of the trees of the property. So this was completed after the first couple of go-rounds, and basically the project was pulled into the middle, all the vegetation around the edges is or something like that.
That's one of the, oh, go ahead. Oh, let's see. Yeah, I wrote down here, trees removed for the both, practical ride, on both sides because of the narrowness. But a more important question, and I don't know if we're still up in the air on this one. Is there a final decision on the entrance to this property? In other words, what will be the entrance road? Is it the one between the two houses, or is it the one further to the east?
I think that what's in the application is... I think that what's in the application is.
The one between the two houses. Well, they have large trees, shaped trees, on both sides, and they would make the road considerably, I mean, it's fairly narrow now because of the trees, but removing them answers to some degree this question.
Yeah, this question raises that noise level.
The trees help tremendously.
Oh, no, I understand.
Yeah, maybe not.
I had an observation about lighting, and this opens up sort of a can of worms, but I. How does one come to decide on the, using the photometrics, the level of lighting? And who finally decides what the proper level of lighting is? I think there's a tendency nowadays to overlight, and we've experienced that downtown, actually, in opening street. And how we come to terms with what is appropriate in terms of security versus excess.
So typically, what we've seen in the past is, one, you comply with the village code and we'll be letting those, so you don't have light spillage, so it's point five over the property lines. So in this case, all lighting would not be allowed to trespass the property lines beyond point five foot candle. I don't believe there's a light on this site that people close to trespassing the property lines. Second is the intensity of the lights. Well, when you do a true photometric plan, so it's light, where the foot candles are how far out the light spillage appears, and you tie it into another light adjacent to it, how far that is, which is an intensity number. We try to keep that number within a certain range. I don't know if the top of that range is, but we compare it to standard areas like residential area, for that example. We also look at building lighting. So building lighting will be typically at your door, emergency entrances. You know, that's part of the architectural elevations that will be provided. So those locations, we ask to be shown now so that we can get a true measure of light. Public walkways and intersections, that's our first concern, is maybe some public walkways, the crosswalks are illuminated, and then the parking lots. Excuse me. That is pub, that is, no dark spots on a public or a joint area where pedestrians would be interacting. That's our priority, and then having that comply with that threshold that I mentioned earlier, will coordinate with, there's a decree. I don't know the numbers off the top, I haven't heard that number is, but the intensity level, I'll go to light foot candles.
Yeah, well, that's the thing I'm trying to get a handle on, is that, in a way, the only way you can evaluate whether it's overlighted or underlighted is to see it. And it sounds like it's, the metrics in a way are defined, or what am I trying to say? How much control you weigh it?
The threshold.
Formulatic, that's.
You can determine the location of the lights. If you see there's over-illuminations on the site that you feel is not appropriate, this party has the ability to say, you know, I think we should remove a couple of these light fixtures. I think it's too, it's causing concerns that you have.
Do the fixtures have controls, break controls in individual fixtures?
They'll give us a cut sheet of the light fixture, and it'll probably be an LED, because it's the most efficient, that's what we're looking for now. And that light fixture, cut sheet by the designer, will give me all the input that comes with it. What's the foot candle, what's the intensity, and then their project will tell us how long it's going to be hot. In most cases, the public walkways are dust to dawn. But as we get further into site level view, you can just confirm out of time on the lighting plan and then it's going to call the worst. No question.
So a good part of reference might be a nighttime or evening time trip to Parkside and interferes one or two to see how that level of light looks. I didn't really get your point about, you know, you can talk to us about lumens and your spread of light and blah, 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 but it's really hard to tell much without seeing it in flesh. And then possibly we can find out what levels those are, and we go one way through the determination.
Well, I mean, as part of my review, I'm trying to make sure that there isn't too much illumination. I'm trying to illuminate pedestrian areas and parking areas where applicable. And then if there's an overabundance of light locations that I think are being on the line, one of my questions would be, you know, consideration for the work considered, would be removal of those old or previous lights. In this case, I believe all the lighting on the buildings is only that is required by a fire code and building code, which is door, door entry, and emergency exits. So the rest of it is sidelink, which is included as part. Jordan?
Yes, I didn't see anywhere in this, in these first fifteen pages, any description or a reference to alternative energy, liquid lighting, specifically dual lighting. Is there any proposed use of solar? Or geothermal? Or, you know, the many sources we have today. I'm not, you know, I'm not saying, you know, three hundred of the light wind, no, but. Is there, is there going to be any emphasis to use some of the better, safer, environmentally more correct sources of energy?
So right now, the code doesn't require them to consider those alternative options. However, this report came to request them to consider using alternative means. Right now, what we've seen and received as part of this package is LED light. And that is typical to what I've seen. These are, these are excellent questions. I do want to just remind folks that, you know, what we're doing, this particular thing is, we're thinking about lighting, but we're thinking of it through the lens of what, whether there could potentially be a significant environmental impact from a lighting. Same with, you know, everything else that we're looking at. Ultimately, that's what, you know, the secret review is leading toward in it. So, you know, these are very relevant questions that are going to come up, you know, as we go through the actual site planning process, but they're, they're not quite what we're trying to focus on here right now. But, you know, not that, I don't want to, you know, discourage those kind of questions at all, but it's, it's, when they ask these general questions, like, it's hard not to start thinking, well, wait, what about the original lighting, how's that going to work? Yeah. So we're thinking really in macro environmental terms.
So thinking of the macro, I'm going back to the thing about the trees, right?
Okay.
And to, and why, I'm going to insert the word substantial, which is not really here. Shockingly, I'm a somewhat. Will the proposed action remove substantial existing natural barriers? And now I feel more comfortable with it now.
All right, so we've done lighting, we'll get to, does a proposed action have potential to produce motors for more than one hour per day? If yes, describe possible sources, potential frequency, and duration of motor emissions, and proximity to various occupied structures. Yeah, but the buildings themselves are not going to be produced. Residential projects, you get friends, you know, it's what you're doing, you got to do a couple. Okay, will the proposed action include any bulk storage of petroleum or chemical products? A hundred and eighty-five gallons in above-ground storage or any amount in underground storage? Answer is no. And that leaves us skip a bunch of questions. Will the proposed action, commercial, industrial, recreational projects only use pesticides during construction or operation? Answer that is no.
Which means no pesticides and INHS lawn care, appropriate.
But that's commercial.
It's commercial, industrial, recreational projects. That's why, that's why it's a no.
Which is really considered.
Okay. All right, and so then, will the proposed action, commercial, industrial projects only involve the requirement of solid waste, and it's not a commercial, industrial project? We don't have to answer that. Okay, and now we're on page nine fifteen. Does the proposed action include construction or modification of the solid waste management facility? No. Will the proposed action at the site involve commercial generation, treatment, storage, or disposal of hazardous waste? No. Onto part E, site and setting of proposed action, this sort of informational stuff. So the existing land uses are listed as check all, uses that occur on, joining or near the project site. And so what we've listed here is residential, rural, agricultural. So that seems appropriate, given what the choices are. And then part B of this is land uses and cover types on the project site. So there, are there any changes to those averages or coverage calculations based on the change in plans? And do we need to make changes there?
That four point six three for the Rosen buildings should change to four point six nine. We changed it earlier.
Yeah. So it's plus four point six nine, so on the next. Yeah.
And what about the forested, does that reflect the new horseshoe center of location and knowledge?
Just a question on that forested, and then the land use above, like, in A, where it says, check all uses if they're on, or it says forest there, do you think that isn't a descriptive? Forest, they mean like of a type, like a state forest?
Or a thick, undisturbed, undeveloped, you know, tree area? This has woody, it has wooded areas, and you should reflect that as vegetation.
It has side color, big field with tree lines.
Tree lines, yeah.
Probably.
All right, so no other changes to those calculations, I mean, just move on. Is the project site presently used by members of the community for public recreation? No. Already facilities serving children, the elderly, people with disabilities within fifteen hundred feet of the project site? Answers yes, because of the school, Coons were example schools, so fifteen feet. Does the project site contain an existing dam? No. Has the project site ever been used as a municipal, commercial, industrial, solid waste management facility? No. Have hazardous waste been generated, treated, and/or disposed at the site? Or does the project site join property, which is now in use of commercial retreats for disposed waste? No. Potential contamination history, has there been a reported spill of the both site? Or have any remedial actions been conducted at or adjacent to both sites? No.
Out of curiosity, sorry, I'll ask, when those lead agencies, or that not lead agencies, when the concern agencies were consulted about this project, TEC would go and go, oh, wait, flagged there, hazardous spill, recorded in nineteen seventy-two, this could be a super point.
So to that point, too, when you do the AF map around line, P E C, our site, as I mentioned, it fills out several categories. This is one, well, no, the other one they filled in. The box that would get filled in is H three, and that one is a no. And so because it's a no, there's no other data base that was required.
Great, thank you.
However, the applicant did want to explain that there was a level of additional review that they provided, and their response states it below. But yes, D C also to the creation, the C E would have responded back in your comments, and say, hey, by the way, please know you have a stream, yeah, and oh, by the way, you're adjacent to a remediation site or on a remediation site.
Okay.
So there was a hit during this phase one investigation. What was that?
It was pesticides from the former farming operations.
Oh, okay. And just a point of curiosity, when was the last time it was farmed? Anybody know?
Only the tens of it would be farmed at last.
Is that right?
Yes.
It was how you collected up till last year.
Okay, then the follow-up, show it, maybe it's clearly different. Right, okay. Okay, is the project site subject to institutional control, limiting property uses? No. That would be things like incorporating the, or environmental easement from the E C. Okay. Natural resources on, near the project site? What is the average depth of bedrock on the project site? Here it says greater than twenty-five feet. So when you do your soils report, like the AF map, or you pick your location, there's a program, or several programs out there, where you can pick your site, and it'll give you the soils map for your site. And in that soils map, it gives you the media and everything else that's associated with that, so the classifications and the characteristics. In that characteristic section, like the soils that they've identified, it would identify the depth of water table, the depth of bedrock. So that's where this information is coming from. Are there bedrock outcroppings on the project site? No. Predominant soil type present on the project site? I don't know what these are. Any reason to change, change them?
Because of change some, not so good soils, some better soils, did you go higher than that?
Obedent silk loam, sounds.
Gravel.
Yeah, gravel, silk loam, sounds like a dream.
There's a lot of soil affecting this here.
Line deck silk.
That's why it's such a great line in this tree. Okay.
Now, what is the average depth of the water table on the project site? Average is zero to seventeen feet. So you can imagine each soil type has its own depth of water table, meaning that there could be more than three identified for this entire area, but they just give us a range. And you have the wetlands on the side, so. So that would be the zero.
Right, yeah. Gotcha.
That's what.
Yeah, we have to that. Almost, almost. The work, the work that we did as well, have the, kind of, hosing it in, so maybe takes them a whole sweep of water and kind of.
Thanks for the drainage status of the project site soils, well-drained thirty-three percent, poorly drained sixty-seven percent. Approximately proportion of the proposed action in the site is slopes. So ninety-five percent of the site is zero to ten percent slope. And then five percent of the site is greater than ten percent slope, with only one percent being greater than fifteen. So not very sloppy, we know, it's a flat field. Okay. Are there any unique geological features on the project site? No. I was one of the, the C E answered questions as well. Okay. And then, yeah, they would have that as that. Surface water features, does any portion of the project site, any wetlands? Yes. Do any wetlands or water bodies join the project site? Yes. Are any wetlands, water bodies, or anything regulated by any federal, state, or local agency? Yes, we talked about that. So for each identified wetland, water body on the project site, provide the following information. So with respect to wetlands, we can say that the Army Corps has completed their jurisdiction determination, right? There you are. So the approximate size of it, one, three, four acres, which that one did not change. Let's see, are there any above water bodies listed? Most recent compilation of the water quality impaired water bodies list, and it's, no. P E C. It's a project site designated floodway? No. One hundred year flood plain? No. Five hundred year flood plain? No. Is it located over or immediately joining a primary, principal, sole source of water? No. Maybe that's another one drawn that answers by D C as well. Okay.
No, that, that was no.
Every project on my, I love these. Over, immediately joining? All right. M. M is.
Wildlife species?
I don't need this question.
Wild, wild place. This one is identify the predominant water life species that occupy or use the project site. Human. We did a Florida and Fana report, it's a separate attachment, so you've got more detail of this answer, unless you have some questions. So we just say refer to the Florida and Fana report?
Yeah.
To Laura. And Fana. Report in application.
And then Lance, have there been identified endangered tree frog species registered on this area? That would have come up.
Yes, and one of the comments coming up specifically as I.
Why do I do that? I was just.
Oh, no, you're correct. It will come up.
Does the project site contain a designated significant natural community?
So the answer no to this one, automatic fill-in by D E C answers yes. Now, the explanation I would agree to based on the research we've done. But I just wanted to point out that there wasn't a discrepancy there.
Yeah, I saw that.
We had to look into that quite a bit, because it's, why is it a pop?
Pretty typical. Should, oh, if it's like an Indian burial ground, draw a half mile circle around. Could be nowhere near your site, but you've got to explore and make sure.
It's the same with the fishing, not only with major species category, they just draw a big circle. So if you're, if you're in that area, we're going to say yes to this answer. And we're probably to do it for the research to justify.
I see. State margins, whatever. Okay, so the answer to that is no. You think that is correct? Because I wish that we've been at the shores of Big Anna Creek, if it was anything, and so we never knew that, okay. Does the project site contain a species of plant or animal that was listed by the federal government as a danger or threatened? No. Does the project site contain a species of plant or animal that was rare? No.
Those are both, they have, those are no, by D E C as well.
Is the project site or dwelling area currently used for hunting, trapping, fishing or shellfishing? No. So then, we're on to section E three. Designated public resources on or near the project site? Is the project site or any portion of it located in a designated agricultural district certified pursuant to various laws? No. Are agricultural lands consisting of highly protected soils present? No. And the reason for that is that there is an index that the Forest Service provides that indicates that it's not type of. Does the project site contain all or part of, or is it substantially contiguous to a national, registered, national, natural landmark? No. And is the project site located in or has it been joined a state listed critical environment area? No. Okay, does the project site contain or is it substantially contiguous to a building, archaeological site or district which is listed on or denominated for historic preservation, et cetera? No.
So the D E C alone map, or just as the previous one draws a circle and says, okay, if you fall in this area, we're going to deem you a little bit dingo. And I'm not filling, they said there's a historic place, the Camp Herman House? Yeah. I did not, I don't remember the, um, where this one is in the site, but it's not.
Prior residence?
Yeah, it's not within the vicinity of the project sites actually. But that's the closest, that's the only one that came up.
Okay.
And they're not in an archaeological site as identified by the D E C or the Chris website, which I want to verify as well.
Well, we're paused, does it matter that all the soil types are greater than a hundred percent? Back in the predominance of it? That forty-seven, thirty-three and sixty-seven is a little bit more than a hundred? Does that matter?
That engineering map, yeah, that should, should come in.
Well, you can't have overlapping soil types, but where it says. They have a product site.
They're going to cluster mine it.
Big cluster minus.
So that has to be because there is overlap, because that's.
There is, right?
Massively over.
Sixty, yeah.
So that has, that's usually the explanation.
Would that be confirmed?
Yeah, it seems like it's.
There's some other documents where they discuss the area and they break it down into different soil types, but they're more like seven or eight of them, and then it equals up in the percent.
It should be, it should be a lot of it. Typically, we can see it equal one percent.
So we'll be here. It's moving. That's why it'd be six, four, seven, so.
Yeah.
Because that would be a lot of, a lot of.
How do we check that one process?
Oh, yeah, okay. Somebody's going to check on that, okay?
Okay. Sorry, I think.
Right.
M R D?
Is the project site located or adjacent to an area designated sensitive or archaeological sites? No. Have additional archaeological sites, places that have been identified? No. As a project site within five miles of any officially designated publicly accessible federal, state or local scene or aesthetic resource? Yes. The resources, the Keddie Lake Seaside Byway? And that is a seaside byway around Keddie Lake, the distance between the project and the resources two miles. Is that, that must be a D E C?
So you know.
It tends to be more of a word or subtext.
And signage is just different.
Okay, is the project site located within a designated river corridor, wild scene of recreation? There's no, that's could be. Yeah, and I believe that was it. Okay. So in terms of the follow-up on part one, Lance, should we compare, you and I compare notes?
Yeah, so the applicant, what I would suggest is to have the applicant resubmit based on the revisions discussed tonight, and then make a review of it and go to the end. Just because it has to be signed by them.
Yeah.
Sensitorial sign makes sense to.
I'm really hoping I just have to proof notes. We all did, you know, which I'm.
Regardless, if I have, I wrote that, I'm correct.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, I've, I've got it all down. Solid, safe to record then that the applicant will update the part one, and we'll have that then.
And the only thing we were missing was the soil.
And Lance, outside of us doing that update, you're going to do follow-up on the waste or on the water part?
Yes, I'm going to communicate between the next meeting with Mike and our office, where we're involved with that, which I can give something back.
But just so I clear, that was more of a water issue than a wastewater issue, right? That's the waters.
Right, the water service.
There is, there is a wastewater issue though, too.
Well, yeah.
Insofar as, this may have been a one-off, but when they first activated the wastewater system, they had a big storm and it overheard the facility. And I don't know if that's been corrected or not, but that.
I believe it has, it has something to do with the stormwater system as well, so that's what some of the work that is done. But I'll communicate that back to our office. Give it some sense. Or at least provide some responsibility.
You're just only telling them water and wastewater.
I have a number, so.
Okay, you're right, you're right.
They only gave us three lines, so for, this is on page eleven. D E C. A oded silk loam plus lancing silk loam should add. Yeah, we give you three lines for sources. So nineteen point seven percent would be a combination of oded silk loam and lancing silk loam.
Do you have to do?
That's more. Eighty-three.
Wait, how's our timing?
We're also going to get to part two. No, I think, okay, that was, that's been my work on, in terms of this stuff. So for the next reading, we'll have the update before, before that. And we'll be able to jump right into part two. You all have the benefit of Lance and I.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Cast that out.
So what you're receiving is not a fully completed project. It's just, I went through the eighteen categories and I reviewed the part one and I confirmed based on items that are identified in the part one, the obvious boxes that were applicable, print pack, surface water, because there was wetlands on site, it says the checkout boxes, yes. Ultimately, I've given some level of factual information in the boxes that I've provided. That's for your review, to make your own determination whether or not you believe it is a yes or a no. And then ultimately, if I understand correctly, between the, between the plan, board chair and the next meeting, we'll further evaluate those.
Right, correct. And I see you also have references in here to the relevant part one information that applies to each one of these, so that you can cross-reference.
Sort of, yeah. By all means, that's exactly where, in a lot of the data, I mean, that's where most of the data comes from. It doesn't mean that you can't have a yes in part two and not have a, a yes in part one.
Right, right.
And I find that looking, sometimes looking through the, the direct impacts, even though they're not necessarily valid in this form, sometimes helps to answer some of those yes or no questions.
Okay, great. All right, next item on the agenda is old business. And I just wanted to get an update, I was hoping Tammy would be here, she's not. Guy, do you know what the status of the labor center doing?
I believe the final form is terms of if we're agreed to.
Oh, God. We can, he hasn't handed me, and I think they were, only when you met. Okay, all right. So I knew they were, I knew they were going to be taking up at the last board proceeds meeting, and I just never heard what actually happened. Not that, you know, from our standpoint, you know, it's really not our business, but the, it's good to know. So we haven't received signed copies yet, but I'll follow up with Tammy as well. But we have asked for invoices several times, but we haven't gotten any. Okay. Just soon, yeah. All right, so anyone have any other old business? New business?
I think it's appropriate, thank you for leading us so well for so long.
Thank you. I had a better reading, you'll still have to put up with me.
Yeah, thank goodness.
I have, we received some net, so I'm not sure when is the right time to give us to, came through the bill.
Mail, throw it to Jack.
Oh.
Usually voices.
I'll know the other individual letters for us, thank you. That's okay. Also Lance, thanks for the nice paper on the, uh, session two.
Hi, yes.
Very, very bad.
Okay, everybody's very patient. Thank you to the applicants, thank you to Lance, thank you to everyone who helped us out here tonight. Guy? So is there a motion to adjourn? A little second? Any discussion? All in favor? Vote? Okay.